Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Hello and welcome, everyone. My name is Tiffany Caban. My pronouns are she/her, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. Today's oversight hearing is about microgrants for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. And additionally, we will hear Resolution Number 165 of 2022, sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, calling on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign Assembly Bill 1847, Senate Bill 843, authorizing certain shelters for victims of domestic violence to be reimbursed for any payment differential for housing a single individual in a room intended for double occupancy. We're going to have a couple of opening remarks. First, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Farias.
Thank you so much, Chair Caban. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for hosting this important hearing today. As the co-chair of the Women's Caucus, I can say with pride that the women of the City Council have been hyper-focused on pushing legislation forward that codifies protections and support for survivors in the New York City Charter. Thanks to the leadership of Chair Caban, this is now the second hearing this Domestic Violence Awareness Month of October, where we have focused on actions New York State needs to take to ensure the safety of survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. New York City has taken important strides in stopping the cycles of violence and poverty that are often correlated with domestic violence. Gender-based violence is among the leading causes of homelessness in New York City. While anyone can be a victim of such violence, women, particularly Black and Latinx women, are disproportionately impacted. Individuals that identify as LGBTQIA+ are also 21% more likely to experience poverty than their cisgender heterosexual counterparts, and are additionally disproportionately impacted by gender-based violence and face homelessness as a consequence. This is a devastating reality for far too many, and few survivors receive the support they need to heal and move past the trauma they experienced. The issue of housing for survivors and microgrants were a top priority for the Women's Caucus during budget negotiations, and we were disappointed that the adopted FY24 budget allotted just 1.2 million for the program, less than a quarter of the necessary minimum appropriation of 6 million. Many survivors are just one health scare or missed paycheck away from the financial crisis, and while existing support programs provide survivors with a critical lifeline, they are neither immediate nor do they provide families with the flexibility they need. To name a few examples, survivors cannot use vouchers to purchase food, furniture, clothing, or medical supplies. In light of this reality and the strain that the COVID-19 pandemic took on households throughout the city, in June of 2020, the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence launched its first-of-its-kind emergency financial relief program for survivors that directly provided them with the microgrants to cover expenses ranging from rent, utility, bills, clothing, and more. At the close of this program, it became incredibly clear that not only there is a huge need for targeted funding, but also how positive of an impact microgrants had on the life and the healing of survivors. Given these benefits, last June, Chair Caban, co-chair Lewis, myself, and several of our colleagues, with the support of Speaker Adrienne Adams, pushed to pass Support Survivors Package, the Support Survivors Package, which was signed into law by Mayor Adams. While this was an incredible feat towards the fight to end domestic and gender-based violence, we still have a lot of work ahead of us. Earlier this month, we heard and passed my resolution on the need for a Purple Alert system for missing victims of domestic violence, and today, we'll be hearing the important resolution led by my co-chair Farah Lewis. We have the potential to provide immediate, critically-needed, and direct support to help survivors access safety and economic stability, and I believe that, in partnership, we can address this critical issue and enhance our city's public safety. I look forward to hearing the administration's update on the microgrant program as recently codified and to examining the current need for housing support for survivors. Thank you again to Chair Caban for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you so much. The trauma of experiencing domestic and/or gender-based violence can cause devastating lifelong psychological and physical impacts, especially without timely and effective support services. Unaddressed trauma can lead to chronic emotional distress, relationship problems, and substance use disorders, all of which can lead to challenges with maintaining employment or housing. Ultimately, untreated trauma has costly consequences for survivors, their families, and communities. Significantly, DV is one of the leading causes of homelessness in New York City, surpassing that of evictions, and also contributes to overcrowding in shelters. Black and brown folks are less likely to report experiences of domestic violence due to past experience of or fear of discrimination in the criminal legal system. LGBTQIA+ communities also report feeling uncomfortable asking the police for help due to fears of experiencing discrimination. Immigrant communities may be reluctant to report domestic violence or gender-based violence to law enforcement for fear of being detained or deported, and people with disabilities are similarly reluctant to report their concerns. Significantly, these experiences are compounded for those who hold multiple and intersecting identities across these communities. In June of 2020, the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, also known as NGBV, launched a first-of-its-kind emergency financial relief program for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. This program was designed to directly provide survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with microgrants to cover expenses ranging from rent, utility bills, clothing, and other items. And while the program's goal was to serve 312 families with an average microgrant of $1,500, at the end of the program, 693 applications had been received and had provided an average microgrant of $1,243.37 per applicant to a total of 377 total clients. At the close of the program, NGBV conducted an evaluation which revealed not only the need for such targeted funding, but also the positive impact of such a program. The program evaluation showed that those who received microgrants reported positive impacts on their mental health and well-being, financial and housing security, and their children's feelings of safety and well-being. And I just quickly want to say that NGBV did an incredible job standing this up at a really, really difficult moment, super fast, and it saved lives. On June 14th of 2022, the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, this committee, held a hearing on the Support Survivors Package of legislation, which included Intro Number 153, co-sponsored by myself and Councilmember Hanif, in relation to establishing a domestic violence survivor housing stability program, codifying a program based on the microgrant program launched by NGBV. On November 22nd, 2022, the bill was adopted, becoming Local Law 112. Now, today's hearing, the committee looks forward to receiving an update on NGBV's administration of the microgrant program, as recently codified, and to examining the current need for housing support by survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. The committee is also interested in receiving testimony that can inform policies to assist survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with expenses related to maintaining housing on an ongoing basis. I would like to thank the representatives of NGBV, advocates, impacted individuals, and members of the public who will be providing testimony today. And in closing, I'd like to thank my Legislative and Budget Director Madhuri Shukla, Communications Director Jesse Meyerson, as well as our committee staff, Committee Counsel Sahar Mozami, and Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dwyer for their work on this hearing. Okay. And also a special thank you to Mara Davis for her contribution to this hearing as well. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with us today. You've already heard from Councilmember Farias, Councilmember Riley is here, Councilmember Lewis, and Councilmember Hanif. I will now turn it, oh, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Lewis for opening statements, and then we'll turn it over to Committee Counsel.
There you go. Thank you so much. We need an extension cord. Okay. Good morning, Chair Caban and committee members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about Resol 165, a resolution calling on the state to authorize shelters for victims of domestic violence to be reimbursed for any payment differential for housing a single individual in a room intended for double occupancy. Through the work done in this council, I know the strides we are collectively taking to address the current housing crisis, whether that is through championing affordable housing in our districts or urging the administration to provide resources for those experiencing homelessness across the city. Today, my legislation specifically addresses the gap in housing for domestic violence victims and the hurdles they experience in seeking shelter due to arcane and inflexible state law. Domestic violence is a leading cause of homelessness in New York City. In addition to evictions and overcrowding, domestic violence survivors often cannot stay with family members for fear of running into their abusers, and many lack the income to find permanent housing quickly. The provision of state emergency shelter is a primary tool for those fleeing domestic violence. Through countless budget hearings, rallies, and news reports, we have all seen our shelter system buckle under the weight of the housing crisis in our city. There are women and their families who now see, who now see, sorry, who now see waiting countless hours to be housed, whether by themselves, at the Franklin, or Help Women Center, or at PATH Center with their children. Due to the current state policy, the shelters wait hours and possible days to get much-needed shelter and relief from their abusers often restrict what is available for these women who are simply trying to escape the violence from their household. There are beds available in double occupancy rooms, rooms that two people who would be placed to be housed together, dormitory-style, that cannot be used to house these individuals because these shelters would only be allowed to house two individuals at a time and not only, sorry, and not allow them to give their clients a place to call home. If we want to seriously commit to addressing this crisis, we have to address these obstacles and increase a system-wide capacity for single adult women who otherwise would be blocked from accessing shelter to keep themselves safe. My legislation, Resol 165, compels the state to pass A1847, sponsored by Assembly Member Havessi and others. The New York State Office of Children and Family Services to prioritize safety and allow shelters to use all of their available beds for single women to be reimbursed. Temporary housing that gives them space and safety should be paramount. A family of individual needs the services of the community and organizations, but the nonprofits are having difficulty and must have the assistance and assurances their fiscal needs, assurances their fiscal needs will be timely addressed. This resolution supports both providers and our vulnerable neighbors, and I urge our colleagues to pass this legislation so we can actively participate in the protection and healing of families and individuals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll turn it over to the Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from members of the administration. Please, will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
So, good morning, Chair Caban and members of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. I am Saloni Sethi, First Deputy Commissioner of the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, or NGBV. I'm joined by Jamal Alseraj, NGBV's Executive Director of Community Initiatives. NGBV operates the city's five family justice centers and directly manages a contract portfolio of prevention and intervention programming. Our office builds capacity for agency staff and community members to identify and respond to domestic and gender-based violence, or DVGBV, through outreach and training, and we develop policies and best practices to strengthen the city's approach to these issues. We collaborate with city agencies, over 100 nonprofit providers, community stakeholders, and people with lived experience to reduce barriers and ensure access to inclusive services for survivors of DVGBV. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the implementation of Local Law 112 of 2022 related to microgrants for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. Our implementation of Local Law 112 is informed by our 2020 Emergency Financial Relief microgrant program. This program provided microgrants to survivors in response to their acute and unique needs during a period of crisis and uncertainty. Within two months, this program successfully allocated $468,750 to 377 unique survivors with an average grant amount of $1,243. NGBV has made substantial progress on our new microgrant initiative, what NGBV is calling flexible funding. Over the past year, NGBV has been working with OMB, the Law Department, and other agencies to minimize potential barriers to accessing funding. We are pleased to share that eligibility for flexible funding will not be tied to immigration status, and we plan to offer survivors diverse disbursement methods, including checks, payments directly to vendors, and physical or electronic gift cards and debit cards. We are pleased to have $1.2 million in baseline funding for this initiative, which we anticipate will serve at least 900 survivors based on our previous program. In addition to providing grant relief, our services encompass safety planning, housing-focused case management, and direct connection to additional DVGBV services. As we move forward with implementation, we have two goals in mind: maximizing the amount of funding that can be dispersed directly to survivors, and ensuring that we work as expeditiously as possible to begin programming. We are working closely with the Department of Social Services' ACCO team to identify the best procurement methods to meet these goals, given city processes and timelines. We also continue to be in conversation with our community-based providers, especially those focused on housing stability, to ensure their input is incorporated into the program's design. This includes finalizing implementation details like data collection, community outreach, and best practices for low-barrier disbursement. Our goal is to begin dispersing flexible funding to survivors in the next few months. We look forward to continued collaboration with the council, our sister city agencies, and our community-based partners to support safe and stable housing for survivors. Thank you for the opportunity to appear here today. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. I guess I'll start at the end of your testimony. You testified that your goal is to begin dispersing flexible funding to survivors in the next few months. What does that mean? Can you give me a tighter window that's like a little bit more identifiable, quantifiable? And can you walk me through sort of why it's taken the amount of time that it has? For like a layperson, right? Because this is a program that y'all stood up very, very quickly during the pandemic, and so I'm wondering, what challenges have there been in getting these funds out the door in this sort of same kind of speed and with the same kind of urgency that you were able to do so during the peak of the pandemic?
Sure. So I can speak a little bit to all of it. I think, you know, in terms of the challenges, we received the appropriation as of July 1, 2023, which is when we received the funding, which is this fiscal year. I think, you know, the key difference between the pandemic program and the current program is the pandemic program was funded by private dollars, and this is funded by city dollars. And so, you know, the rules and processes that come along with city funding are different, right? So I think even in our initial negotiations, we sort of mentioned our procurement timelines would likely be longer. So that's kind of what we're dealing with, and I think some of the wins really in terms of, you know, thinking about the different disbursement methods, it's the first time that we've sort of been here as a city doing this and saying, we can give survivors debit cards, we can give checks, we don't have to pay landlords directly, right? So all of those sort of pieces, I think, is what we've been working on, and that's taken some time. In terms of more clarity in a few months, we are, you know, can't comment on sort of ongoing contract negotiations, but we are in conversation with the ACCO team to really figure out how to launch this as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask just a series of questions, mostly focused on implementation, and then I'll pass it to my colleagues, and I'm sure I'll have additional questions after that. If any of y'all have questions, just let Sahar know. So, you talked a little bit about the proposed timeline for the launch. It was originally noted that it was going to be launched under Home Plus. Is that still the plan?
So, again, we can't really comment on the ongoing negotiation, but we are looking, you know, working with our ACCO team to look across the portfolio to figure out what's the quickest way to launch this.
I mean, can you talk about sort of what are the ideal condition, like, what can you share?
So I think, you know, in terms of our providers, I think what's really important to us and some of the stuff we covered in the testimony is really making sure that these services are housed within an agency that knows how to work with survivors of domestic and gender-based violence and can provide sort of some of all the wraparound supports that we mentioned, right? We want to make sure that safety planning is a part of this. We want to make sure that case management focus on housing and longer-term housing needs are a part of this. We want to make sure that survivors have access to any other, you know, any other programs and services that might meet their economic empowerment needs, their legal needs. So I think that that's really critical, and that's sort of what we're looking at, and kind of reviewing, you know, our existing contract portfolio to figure out what makes the most sense.
Okay. But, and just to be clear, in terms of where it ends up living, understanding that, not quite sure where that will be, are you ruling out it living in a location that is co-located with a police precinct, DA's office?
We haven't ruled anything out, and I think, again, it's, you know, the goal is to, let's say, with our, you know, COVID-19 program, right, one of the things that was easy is we picked one provider and worked with one provider. Our goal is to kind of work with multiple providers to the extent that we can to make sure that we're increasing access as much as possible.
The reason why I'm asking that is because that's one of the critical reasons why this program came to be. We heard directly from survivors saying, and we know just based on the data, that there are lots of folks who do not report, especially for these particularly historically oppressed and marginalized identities, that they don't approach because of police contact, like the possibility of police contact. And also, obviously, this came to be to remove the barrier of having to cooperate with police to be able to get support and funds. So, you know, I know that you're not able to say, you know, sort of who the main partners are going to be, where it's going to live, but I would urge that it not live anywhere that is co-located within something that is attached to or part of the criminal legal system, because it really would be antithetical to all of the testimony that we heard that really informed this legislation and the intention of how the provision of services would look like.
No, and we do anticipate this will live in community, right, in community-based settings. The other thing I'll say, like all of NGBV's programming, we don't require cooperation with law enforcement to receive services, right? So the only proof that we need that you're a survivor of domestic and gender-based violence is self-attestation, and we anticipate that it'll be similar for this program.
Great, thank you. Local Law 112 noted to host the program application on the NGBV website. Is that still where they're going to be collected, or like, will there be other mediums that are used? And if so, can you speak to like some of the accessibility needs?
Yeah, so this is definitely something that we're working on and gathering input from our stakeholders and how to streamline that process. We do anticipate, you know, we want to have something on our website that allows survivors to access this program. And, you know, we're in conversations with folks that are doing this work on what makes sense while also maintaining privacy and confidentiality, right? We don't want the city to have too much data for survivors on their website. So we're trying to figure out what the best streamlined process is, but we do anticipate there will be a way to connect to the program on NGBV's website.
And in addition to the website, like, what other mediums are you looking at in terms of accessing an application?
So, I mean, we have our website, we have our NYC Hope portal, right? We are working, you know, planning to work with our providers on an outreach plan that will involve engaging other providers and referral sources, because that's a critical piece, right? If we have, we want to make sure that our providers are taking referrals from everywhere for this program and making sure they're getting out there and talking about it. We also will be translating everything, as we do, into the top 10 languages, as well as Braille, to kind of work on survivors that might be facing the digital divide. And again, I think with all of our, as with all of our other programs, we're ensuring that this is accessible to survivors with disabilities, right, and making sure that the providers have the technology that they need to provide those services to everybody.
And the goal with partnering with community organizations is that to go across the digital divide, like, making sure that there's something in addition to logging onto a computer and filling that up?
Yes, exactly.
Have you generated that application form yet?
We're in process of drafting it, so we're still working on it.
Okay. So, my request is, can we get a copy of the former application from when y'all stood up the program, and then when the new application is ready? Could you send us a copy of that as well?
We can definitely follow up and get back to you.
Thank you. Okay, so we haven't collected any applications as of yet, right? I think, you know, and these are going to be follow-ups, sort of preemptively asking, I'd love to know when it does go live, how many applications get collected, what are the demographics of the program applicants. Do you have an idea of what the expected microgrant amounts are?
So, we anticipate, I mean, based on the previous program, that we'll end up at a same, similar average, is sort of what we're projecting, about $1,200 per survivor. And, you know, but we're leaving a lot of flexibility, I think, for our providers and how much they can give or help, depending on survivor needs.
So, the Local Law, it notes that microgrants are going to, can be used to cover just a really, which is incredible, a really wide variety of expenses, including safety plan costs, housing costs, legal service costs, medical bills, cell phones, moving costs, other transportation costs. Does NGBV envision any other expenses to be allowed to be covered, or any types of restrictions around what expenses outside of those named by the local law would be covered?
So, right now, I mean, we are planning to have this cover anything that relates to housing stability, right? So that includes those direct housing-related expenses, such as rent, moving costs, or, you know, as well as some of the indirect expenses that might allow you to remain stable in your home, things like childcare, things like medical costs, right? And also thinking about things like, you know, job trainings, things to help you get work. All of those, I think, is, we're open to all of it. So, we haven't ruled anything out yet. I think it's, again, part of our implementation is having conversations with providers to see how best to make that link to housing stability.
And is the commitment to make this as, like, the least onerous as possible in terms of having to provide, you know, receipts and details and categories?
No, I'm glad you asked that, because I think that's one of the biggest learning curves from our COVID-19 program, right, is we realized that for our providers, there was a huge sort of administrative burden in kind of getting all that backup documentation. And I think, you know, we're really excited that we've talked with our partners at DSS, and we will not need that, right? So, I think allowing providers to give somebody, a survivor, a debit card kind of precludes that, so that the survivor can spend that on whatever they want, and we don't have to track it.
Great.
You know, that might vary, again, some by providers in terms of what they need for their own documentation purposes, but as far as the city goes, we won't be requiring that.
Yeah. That's a super critical piece of it. Like, I represented criminalized survivors in court, and just understanding that in a moment of crisis, prolonged acute crisis at that, the ability to, like, get to an appointment on time, or do a thing, or track something is just, it feels like a mountain. So, the ability to make it as easy as possible is super important. So, I know that it can cover expenses that are already incurred in terms of, like, a reimbursement or the back, you know, paying back a debt, obviously. You can buy something on the spot with a debit card. Can they also be used to pay for future expenses?
Per what Saloni had said earlier, I think this is going to be something that is part of the ongoing discussion with community-based partners we're working with to see on the ground how to make that something feasible, and if that's something that they believe to be prevalent with the survivors that we're all working with. So we're not ruling that out.
So, yeah, I know that you named some of the sort of support services that you're hoping to kind of connect people with when they come through the door with an application for a microgrant or flexible funds. Are there point people at each service that have been identified specifically for the program yet?
We don't have point people at this time, but I think, and again, this is where some of the conversations that we are continuing to have with our providers are about, is because all of our providers have their own intake processes, right? So, we want to make sure that somebody that's coming for the service is not be, you know, being over-intaked, for lack of a better word, right, and that, like, we're working with our providers to make sure that whatever we're doing becomes part of their ongoing intake process, and that intake process looks at some of these wraparound needs as well.
And will those connections still be made even if the applicant doesn't receive a microgrant?
Yes, yes.
What forms of outreach do you anticipate making to ensure that survivors know that this is available to them, and how will it be done in a way to ensure accessibility? Like, we already talked about the application itself, but just- Like, we already talked about the application itself, but just in terms of education around its existence and driving people to get the services.
Yeah, so I think, you know, similar with some of the other programs that we've launched over the past few years, I think the ongoing outreach is critical, right? So we anticipate working with our providers to develop sort of comprehensive outreach plans and work with them to conduct in-person outreach, online outreach, you know, emails to other provider networks, right, to all of NGBV's provider networks, to make sure there's education around the program. But I think it's something that we'll be doing sort of on an ongoing basis, going to survivor forums. We have our own, you know, survivor leader group. We anticipate engaging them potentially in this outreach as well, to kind of make sure we're getting the word out as broadly as possible.
Now, you have not identified which community organizations you'll work with to implement the program, Kurt, right?
We, yeah, we're in conversations, we can't comment on the ongoing negotiation.
Okay, can you comment at least on what role those organizations will play in the implementation of the program?
Yeah, so we anticipate, again, that the organizations will obviously, you know, be in charge of implementing and dispersing the funds and taking in the individual cases and making those assessments about need and amount and kind of doing that, which they're all really good at doing. I think, in addition, we anticipate that they'll be working with us to continue sort of refining the program and refining implementation, so that we know, I think one of the things we really want to make sure is that we're meeting the need where it is and making sure that we're looking at the data and looking at who's coming in and, you know, making sure that accurately reflects the need of the community that the organization serves, right? So I think that's an ongoing partnership and conversation.
And just to your point earlier as well, to partner on the outreach end as well.
What do you anticipate being the biggest obstacles for implementation? Besides not having enough money?
Besides our timelines are always long, I think, you know, again, working with multiple providers, I think thinking about uniformity across providers is something we really want to think about and making sure that no matter where a survivor goes, even if it's one of, you know, three or four different orgs, they're getting the exact same opportunity and service. So I think that there is definitely some ongoing work that we will keep doing there to make sure. And then I think the other part is really around reach, right? We want to make sure that we're reaching as many folks as we can. And so how are we, as a city, kind of checking in on where referrals are coming from, where they aren't coming from, right? And then how are we making sure we're going to the places where maybe we're not reaching to make sure that we're meeting the need accurately?
I mean, one thing I immediately think about or anticipate is just that the importance of and the critical need for peers and culturally competent outreach folks, and that oftentimes means, like, these really, really small, community-based organizations that oftentimes get overlooked by the mayor's office or the administration for funding, but they are the most credible messengers and have the most intimate relationships with the folks that are affected by this. How are y'all thinking about making sure that those folks are pulled in?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an ongoing, you know, challenge for us. Like, I think, as you mentioned, we have over 100 CBO partners, right? So that includes some of the larger orgs and some of these very, very small kind of localized orgs. That being said, I think there's always more to be done. I think one of the things that, you know, our office is working on, continues to work on, is thinking about, like, what does community engagement continue to look like? And I think we're actually, you know, building out a team that's going to be doing this work citywide, which is a newer team that we're onboarding. So, you know, I think that's really exciting for us, to get folks that are really going to be out there in community, to really help identify and build those bridges and build those linkages. The other thing I'll sort of mention is I think we are also committed really to partnering directly with survivors, and I think they're really helpful in those efforts and helping us identify the places that may have helped them that we're not aware of, right? Many of our survivor leaders also have their own organizations and networks. I think really thinking about how do we tap into all of those to help get the word out there is really important.
Thank you. I have more questions, but I will hand it over to my colleagues for now. Is there anybody?
Aniefan Riley.
Okay. So Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Chair Kabon. Thank you for being here. I know you mentioned that you're unable to share which community organizations you're working with at this moment, but would appreciate getting to know which groups will be part of this important program. Are you able to share what the intake process looks like from beginning to end? Is it with the connection of a provider? Is it directly with the agency? Could you just walk through what survivors have to do to participate?
Similar to, as we've been saying, sorry if it sounds like a same answer, that as we're working with our providers and reflecting on previous programming that we've offered, working with the community-based organizations, we're wanting to think about ways to streamline processes while being able to gather the necessary information, but really being a low-barrier model for survivors to access. So we're working with our providers to see the best way for survivors to connect to the program we may develop and the services offered.
Are there any lessons learned that you're hoping to include in the new version of the program?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it goes back to making this sort of, you know, not burdensome to the survivor or the provider, right? We don't anticipate it'll be like a lengthy application process, right, with some kind of like, what is this need meeting? We're hoping to kind of streamline some of those pieces, and I think it also goes back to the categories of need, right? So since we know what the major categories were for last time, can we sort of make those categories in advance for our providers, so we're not making that justification over and over again, right? If we say it's technology, we know technology is a category we're covering, and therefore it meets the need. So I think we're thinking about those pieces a lot, and then I think, as I'd mentioned, also some of the backend administrative stuff, which, you know, the receipts and the having to buy things directly and to think about multiple disbursement methods, like, those are the really, really, you know, I think those are really critical in helping us get this out there as quickly as possible and efficiently as possible.
And could you also share if the submission is coming directly from survivors or community providers?
A combo of the two.
A combination of the two, okay, great. And really appreciate knowing that what you're working on right now is to ensure low barrier and inclusivity. Could you talk a little bit more about how immigrant communities will be able to utilize this program? And I know you mentioned 377 survivors in two months. That allocation sounds incredible, particularly if there was a reach of 900 survivors. Could you share a breakdown of the 377 survivors?
Sure.
Both demographic and racial breakdown and also borough-wise?
So here's, I mean, we know, and we can always provide further detail based on what we have, but of the folks, the 377 folks that received micro grants during COVID-19, 90% were Black, Indigenous, and people of color. 40% of those were Latina, Latinx, or Latinx. 32% were Black, 13% were Asian, 10% were white, 3% were Middle Eastern, 1% were American, Indian, Alaskan Native, or Native American. 95% of the clients made less than $40,000 annually, and 65% of the clients were immigrants. So I think, you know, I think that program did a good job of kind of meeting the needs that we've identified, right, for folks with multiple marginalized identities, which is what we hope to replicate.
And then, are you able to share where the reach was across boroughs? Was there a particular borough that you saw more survivors or less?
We can follow up and see if we can get back to you on that.
And then, as a result of the previous program and now being in consultation with providers, will there be more of a specified outreach plan for immigrant communities, for survivors with disabilities, and other more marginalized populations within the survivor community?
Definitely. I think this is something we plan to work with our providers on, is how are we, you know, conducting outreach to make sure we're reaching as diverse a group of survivors as possible.
And when the intake process is ready, could you share that with the council? Would also love to see what languages this application is available in.
We can, yeah, we'll definitely follow up.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Riley?
Thank you, Chair Kabon. Good morning. This office operates the New York City Family Justice Centers, which are multidisciplinary service centers co-located with the district attorneys in each borough, providing social services, civil, legal, criminal justice assistance for victims, survivors of DV, and GBV and their children. Can you just walk through what is the day-to-day feel of these centers? Understand survivors of domestic violence may be reluctant to speak up about their experiences, even with experts, and are they cited in specific areas?
Sure. So, yes, we have five FJC's, one in each borough. What I'll say is each borough feels slightly different. Each borough's Family Justice Center has, you know, NGBV administers the centers but doesn't provide the direct services. So we contract with community-based organizations in each borough to provide those services, and those organizations vary by borough, right, and kind of meet those boroughs' needs. In terms of the day-to-day, I think, you know, the, one of the benefits of being co-located with the district attorney's office is that we can provide walk-in services, right? So most DV, GBV orgs have confidential locations due to safety concerns for survivors that might be accessing services there, because we have security and, you know, there's pros and cons to everything. But one of the pros of having the security is we can offer walk-in services, which is really important. So anybody can walk in, regardless of the language they speak, regardless of their immigration status, regardless of income, sexual orientation, or gender identity, walk in, and what will happen first is when you go to the front desk, you'll be seen by a screener, and that screener will do a very quick sort of process to ask about what you're here for, right? And because they're walk-in, part of the goal of the screening is to make sure you're in the right place for the services you need. And so once somebody has been through that screening process, they will be assigned a case manager who will then help navigate the various services that they can access. And that usually all happens, like, on the same day. You know, sometimes that case management appointment is the next day if they come in late in the evening, but usually we try to make that happen that day. And then that case manager helps the survivor and their family kind of work with multiple providers to access the services they need. So they might be working with one provider for legal services, they might be working with another provider for children's counseling, another provider for economic empowerment supports.
Thank you. What is the operating cost of the shelter?
We can follow up with the exact numbers of the operating cost of the Family Justice Centers.
Okay.
If I may, I was going to add.
Oh, sorry.
In addition, no, that's fine, thank you. In addition to the contracted providers Soloni was referencing, we also, at the Family Justice Centers, partner with a lot of in-kind, or have in-kind partnerships with a lot of organizations, which allows us to work with culturally, linguistically-specific providers who may not be contracted providers with us, to try to enhance the experience for folks who choose to come into the Family Justice Center and may have a diverse range of cultural or language needs.
Thank you. And one last question to piggyback off of Chair Kabon. The office's role is to improve coordination of systems and services, develop mechanisms to improve the city's response to DV situations, and implement public education campaigns to heighten awareness of domestic violence. The National Commission of COVID-19 and Criminal Justice produced reports that show that domestic violence incidents in the United States increased more than 8% following the imposition of lockdown orders during the 2020 pandemic. Has there been any adjustment or investments to the public education campaigns conducted since the COVID-19 pandemic, which informed experts nationwide about the complexities of gender-based violence for individuals living with abusive partners?
Sorry. So, yeah, so I think, you know, again, we have our, we have ongoing efforts to provide education and training, and everything that we do sort of considers a situation in which, you know, somebody might also be living with their abusive partner, right? So we have a training team that conducts training for anybody that might be working with domestic and gender-based violence survivors. We do sort of ongoing outreach in communities, doing workshops with people to understand the dynamics of intimate partner violence. And I think, you know, more broadly than that, I think we do a lot of work that's around prevention education that we fund through our community-based providers, trying to reach folks and just kind of prevent the domestic and gender-based violence in the first place.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Kabon.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Chair. I know, it's disgusting. Thank you, Chair. Some quick questions, and one we'll piggyback off of what the chair mentioned earlier. Flex funding, it's not tied to immigration status, so I wanted to know how much of the current grant can be allocated to our new New Yorkers as opposed to survivors that may be on a waiting list or waiting to get access to funds?
So, again, as we work with our providers on implementation, it's something that we're thinking about a lot. We don't, you know, we'd like to avoid a situation in which we have long wait lists, right? And I think that definitely happened with the micro grant program. We got a lot of applications at once, and so I think this is something we're really considering, is how do we make sure there's a consistent flow without people having to wait months for something that's supposed to be an emergency relief, right? So I think that is definitely a goal that we're working towards.
All right, it'll be good to know how many folks are on the waiting list as opposed to new New Yorkers, and how are you guys gonna manage that process? So I guess we'll get back to you on that. The 1.2 million that serves 900 survivors with flex funding, I wanted to know what additional economic opportunities do the 900 survivors receive or have access to to combat dependency?
Sure. You know, part of this, we'll be working with our providers and figuring out what the exact sort of pieces are, but one thing that I think we can offer in this space is recently, at our five Family Justice Centers, we added a case manager that specifically focuses on economic empowerment, right? So even if we end up with a community-based organization that may not have that within their portfolio, we can always offer that through our Family Justice Centers. And some of that will look like individualized work to kind of assess where you are, where you want to go, and then figure out a path to get you there.
All right. I guess we'll follow up on that as well. A Family Justice Center is not always helpful when it comes to that. I went through the process myself as a survivor of domestic violence, so it'd be good for us to have further conversation about what that could look like. My other question is, this is regarding the housing, so I wanted to know if you could break down the housing case management providers offer for the flex funding process? What does that look like?
So we're still sort of in conversation of figuring out the pieces of that, right? But I think what we anticipate is it'll look like some kind of intensive support in terms of meeting your housing needs. So that's a variety of things, right? It depends on your situation. So if you have a voucher, it could be like going with you to find landlords, right, helping you find places that might take the voucher. If you don't, if you have your own income, it could look like, how do we help you kind of manage that income in a way that supports your housing needs? If you are eligible for other housing supports and services, it may look like applying for those supports and services, right? So I think it'll, we anticipate it'll be sort of a variety of things, but all related to this, how do we maintain housing?
Okay. And my last question is in regards to something that the chair mentioned earlier regarding implementation. I wanted to know what's the reporting process for implementation of funds to the organizations? Like, how is the agency monitoring the reporting process just to ensure that there's accessibility across the board?
Yeah. Again, it's something that we're discussing and thinking about a lot, but I think, you know, it's definitely on our radar. So one of the things, we definitely want to, you know, collect data from them on an ongoing basis and review that. I think we're also thinking about making sure that, you know, the providers are in conversation with us when they have difficult decisions, right? So we can kind of help them navigate those decisions if they're trying to choose between needs or choose for a particularly high need, for instance, you know, we don't have a cap on the funding. And then the other piece that we're sort of thinking about a lot is how are we making sure that, like, the referrals are really coming from everywhere, right? And the money's kind of getting everywhere. So a lot of that is going to be kind of making sure that we're on top of the data that we're gathering on a fairly regular basis, especially as the program is initially implemented.
So it'd be good to know if that's a monthly, quarterly basis of ongoing reporting, as our chair is a proud advocate, making sure that we're getting access to these funds. It would be good to know what this looks in aggregate, what it looks like. It's very important to know, so we know how much we're advocating for.
No, and we can definitely get back to you once, like, those details are finalized. We're happy to share them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fedias?
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize, I had to step out for another meeting, life of balancing all the things in this city, so if any of these questions were already asked, give me some grace. So initially, we have budgeted for 6 million, and initially, and what we've seen through the last year of FY '24, only 1.2 was actually, 1.2 million was actually put into the budget for it, but we had an initial onset of a 6 million ask. Can we, can you folks explain why, what was budgeted out for 6 million? What was the goal of reaching? How many people, et cetera?
Um, so I think that the, you know, the $6 million figure, I think, is is not our number.
Okay.
But I think, you know, for us, we believe what we have is really good for a solid foundation. I think as we're launching the program, we're gonna continue evaluating what what's the need, right? I think that's another piece of of data that that's really important for us to keep collecting is is was what's the ongoing need.
Sure. And as I came in, I believe I heard Councilmember Lewis asking if there are, if there's lists, like waiting lists? Do we have metrics of how many people are in need or how many people we have to decline? Is that a number that we have?
So since we haven't, the program hasn't launched yet, we don't have that yet. But again, I think as we're thinking about, that's a critical thing we want to consider, right? And I think it's one of the pieces that we learned from the COVID-19 program is that, you know, we got a bunch of applications really quickly and then took a while to get through them. And so we want to figure out a a way to minimize that because we don't want people to have to wait for something that's emergency assistance.
Sure. And so in the COVID-19 program, we were able to serve at least 900 folks?
377 folks. I think the 900 is is what we anticipate we'll do with the 1.
Okay, it's what we anticipate. We were able to serve that those 377?
Yeah.
With the 1.2?
With the COVID-19 funding, which was $468,000.
Oh, so that's where the 1.2 and the 900 people.
Yeah.
Math is mathing. That makes sense. Okay. Um, and so just in that program, and again, apologies if this was already answered, did we have, we had a lot of applications. We were able to get to under 100 people or nearly 400 people. Um, how many applications came in and how many were denied? And for any specific criteria that would maybe is different from the COVID-19, uh, application versus what we're looking at with this program?
So we can, um, follow up about, we know whether which applications were denied and why they were denied. Um, off the top of my head, I'm looking for the exact number, but I want to say, um, yeah, we had, we had 693 applications coming.
Okay, so we got through a fairly good amount of folks. Um, and are we going to touch base? Are those people gonna be automatically rolled into when this program begins? Are they gonna be notified of the program's anticipation since we knew they had a prior need? Are we gonna follow up with those folks and see?
We can follow up, um, and get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you. Um, so I actually, and again, understanding that the, there are lots of details yet to be finalized, um, for the the implementation of the program and execution of, um, the the micro grant program. So I want to ask a couple of questions about the COVID program. Um, just on the most basic level, why was the program launched?
So again, I think, um, you know, a a private foundation had worked with NGBV and the Mayor's Fund to launch the program. And I think one of the things that, you know, came up around COVID-19 was really putting this focus on on everyone's economic needs, including the unique needs of survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. But it really was that that partnership with the foundation and the Mayor's Fund that that kind of drove, um, that that program and its launch and design.
And, yeah, I I think also just for like, for context, I think when a private funder comes to say, hey, we want to fund a thing, they're not making that decision in a vacuum. They have a whole team of people who are like, where should we put our funds to do some good in the world? There is an extremely, um, important, uh, and massive need here. Let's go try and alleviate some of this harm in the community. Like, that's that's fair, right?
Yes.
Um, and eh, how how were the applications received for that program? I know you had it on the NGB website. Uh, and then could you just in a little more detail walk through any of the other ways that folks could get their applications in and and how they were they were processed?
Sure.
And what metrics were used to decide whether that applicant was was cleared to receive funds?
Sure. So the, so the the applications primarily went through service providers who completed the applications with their clients and then submitted them to Sanctuary for Families, which was the provider that was in charge of dispersing the funds. Um, and, you know, uh, they were the contracted provider to disperse the funds. Once an application was, um, received, the program director at Sanctuary reviewed applications for completeness and accuracy and worked with service providers to correct and or complete applications via email. Um, and then after it was approved by the program director, really just for completeness, it was sent to a program coordinator who approved and and dispersed funds.
How long did that take, start to finish?
We can get back to you. I mean, I think, I think it probably took a few weeks. We we can get back to you on on the on the exact timeline.
Okay. And I and I'd love to know, uh, you know, what that exact timeline is and how y'all are thinking about continuing to streamline the process, um, to to get the funds out the door as quickly as possible, understanding that, um, you know, these are quite literally emergency funds. Um.
Oh, good.
To that, to that point, I think just as a reflection, as we mentioned, some of the lessons learned, um, given that we were, one of the things we're looking at for this iteration of a flexible funding program is having multiple or diverse dispersment methods to try to minimize the timeline to get some of that. So in the the way that it was set up, given a a bunch of considerations, um, a lot of it had to be payments directly to vendors, uh, initiated and, um, dispersed via the provider, via Sanctuary for Families. Um, and now we're looking at diverse dispersment methods that could be direct to client to try to reduce some of that timeline for dispersment because we recognize the emergent needs.
Now, this question is like, I I I wanted to give you your flowers in in my opening because, again, I just think it was just like an incredible thing that y'all managed to do in a very short period of time. Um, so but I would love for you to just take some space. Uh, if you could share any information on the positive impacts on survivors who received, uh, funds during that time in relation to both their short and and long-term financial stability. Like, tell me about the good that y'all saw.
Sure. Um, yeah, we did do an evaluation after after the fact of the program. And I think, um, we're able to reach a a portion of the survivors. Of of those we we reached, um, clients and service providers, uh, about 40% of clients and, uh, about 40% of, uh, service providers reported that the program sort of helped the, uh, their clients remain housed and improved their, um, immediate financial stability. Um, in addition to that, I think some of the things that are interesting is like about 48% of the clients who were who responded reported feeling safer since, you know, uh, participating in the micro grant program. Uh, 44% of their clients reported that their children felt safer. Um, and 46% of clients reported that their mental health had improved, right? And I think those are really important things to look at, that 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 immediate financial security and housing stability really has those longer-term impacts on on your mental and emotional well-being for you and your children. And I think that that's really what we're we're hoping to to replicate.
Uh, and i- is, can you offer any more information related to how the program helped a survivor maintain their housing?
Sure. I mean, we're we're happy to follow up and we can probably, um, you know, I think some of them are are direct rent payments, but we can follow up and and share some more stories and anecdotes as too, if that's helpful.
Right. Um, I want to talk to you a little bit about the the current budget for this program. Um, you mentioned it before, it's 1.2 million for the the fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
And you had said that it was something around a little over 900 applicants you expect to be able to be served by that amount?
Yes.
Is is this amount expected to wholly go towards grants or will a portion of it be used for staffing and and implementation needs?
So I think a a portion will definitely be used to support providers administrative needs and administering administering the program. Um, and I'll sort of also caveat that 900 number really comes from an average grant of 1243, right? So so if we see that change, that that number is also subject to change.
Uh, how much do you anticipate having to go towards or needing to go towards like staffing and implementation needs?
We're we're still in in negotiations with the providers on that, so we haven't, you know, sort of finalized a number.
And we would love to see all of that information once it's finalized. Um, based on the projections from the COVID program, 1.2, is that gonna fulfill the needs of the the program?
So I think, you know, with what we have, we can build out a a robust program that that meets a significant part of the need. And I think we're, we're really, really excited to be able to able to do that. You know, I think, um, a key, like, piece of this to us by getting something on the ground is also to continue evaluating the ongoing need. Um, so I think we hope to do both with with this with this funding.
But certainly, you'd you'd like more money.
You know, it's housing in New York City. Um, but, no, but I think, I think what we have is is really gonna allow us to do to do a lot. So I think we're we're really excited to have, uh, the amount of funding that we do have.
And for for me, I just am constantly thinking about, you know, like, when we, when we see a a readily identifiable problem, our solutions need to be scaled to the size of that problem. And where where I think it's it's falling short is that we know that the 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 need, the scale is huge. Um, and unfortunately, 1.2 million is is going to leave a lot of people behind. But that's like sort of what I want to 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 kind of like shift my next, um, questions to. So we know what this funding can do, like, give or give or take some variables. What information do we currently have on the number of survivors of domestic and gender-based violence currently in the city?
So most of our information comes from, um, data that that's reported to NYPD, right? So we don't have prevalence data on prevalence of domestic and gender-based violence in New York City.
So you were prefacing in this by saying the data we have is solely from what gets reported to the police and we know very, very confident confidently that there is a huge percentage of people who do not report.
Right. I think, I think.
That's like a shared, we all know this.
Yeah. I think nationally, it's about 50% of folks that don't, you know, that.
Okay. So the numbers you give me, we can easily double.
Yeah. So I think, you know, and again, I think, and, you know, for what we're basing it on, again, is, you know, we know that in 2022, there was 272,484 domestic incident reports, right? That doesn't tell us the number of unique survivors. It tells us the number of reports made to NYPD. About 119,000 of those were intimate partner-related. We also have some of our service data. So we know that, like, at the FJC's, there was 50,798 client visits in 2022 across all five FJC's, serving about 15,972 unique clients. Um, we also know that, like, in in 2022, the domestic violence emergency shelters served about 8,008 individuals, right? And we also know that there's a portion of those survivors that probably end up in DHS shelter as well. So so I think we can, we can look at, you know, all of those pieces and kind of, uh, get a sense of who we're currently reaching and who's reaching out for services.
So conservatively, we're talking about survivors and the numbers of tens of thousands, conservatively? And again, I just, I'm just like pointing out the math disparity. Like, the the work that y'all are doing is so amazing, but it's only going to potentially reach 900 people when we know the need is at the bare minimum in the tens of thousands range.
Yeah. And I think, again, I think one of the things that we're really thinking about this program as and what we're excited about is I think that, you know, there's an ongoing learning curve of like, what is the need? What is the number? Like, who are we reaching, right? What are, what are some things we may not be anticipating that we might need to, need to meet that we just haven't thought about yet? So I think this gives us an opportunity to really look at those pieces, um, and then really think about like, you know, how do we expand scale to the extent that we can when we can a program that we kind of already know the ins and outs of implementation about, right? So I think, I think that that's really important to us as well.
Yeah. And and again, this is not a reflection on any of y'all, but, um, like, when we talk about funding, when we can, where we can, that these are choices that we make. The, it's a massive budget. Yes, it's a pie, but we prioritize certain things over others. And I would argue that the both public health and public safety outcomes, um, the returns on that investment are far, far higher, uh, than a lot of the things that we currently put money into and and call, like, safety, infrastructure. Um, I think this is probably one of the most important pieces of safety infrastructure the city could fund. Um, okay, so again, on the understanding that the numbers you have for me are going to be under-reported and that they are limited to, um, data that is collected, uh, via po- police reporting. Um, with those caveats, do you have information on the demographic breakdown by race, age, gender, sexual orientation, immigration status, disability, or or any other, um, characteristics?
Sure. Um, we do. So I think, you know, we can look at, um, we have, we have some data for the calendar year 2020 and 2021, um, that we can kind of go through. We're happy to sort of get back to you and and give you the the charts as well. Um, but, you know, when we're looking at sort of IPV felony assaults in New York City, reported to NYPD in 20, 2020 and 2021, um, there was, uh, 11,083 incidents. Uh, of of those, 10,844, uh, had, uh, race reported. So, uh, 46% of the survivors were black. 36.6% of the survivors were Hispanic. Uh, 10.3% of the survivors were identified as white. Uh, 7% of the survivors identified as Asian or Pacific Islander and 0.1% identified as American Indian or Alaskan native. Um, and then, and similarly across, you know, in in 2020, 2021, uh, of the 214,736 domestic violence incident reports, we'd see similar sort of, uh, racial demographic breakdown. Uh, about 49.9% of those, a survivor was black. Um, uh, 5.3% of those, the survivor was white. We had 5.3% of where the survivor was Asian Pacific Islander, 0.4% American Indian or Alaskan native, and 9.8% other. And we can sort of give you that full breakdown, because I know. And then similarly, I mean, we see something similar answer the family related domestic violence incident reports have reported to the police, um, where of the 144,309 non-IPV related domestic violence reports, right? Talking about other other forms of family violence. Um, but where where the race could be, of the victim could be determined, 52.6% of the victims were black. Uh, 30% were white, 5.5% were Asian Pacific Islander, um, uh, 0.5% were, uh, American Indian or Alaskan natives, and 11.2% were other.
Thank you. Um, are the pegs gonna have any effect on the the current allocation for this program?
So what we can say is that this is a priority program for us. And so, you know, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that that, um, it remains secure. And, you know, as of right now, I think we're, we're in a good place to make sure we launch this in in this fiscal year.
Well, I I wanna thank you for taking the time to field, uh, my questions and my colleagues' questions. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Um, and I just, you know, at the bill signing for this, the mayor said that he was proud to sign it and that he was gonna put the money that was needed for this program. Um, and so we were all, especially the Women's Caucus, um, incredibly, not just disappointed, but but quite frustrated and angry to to see that the program is is only being funded, uh, 1.2. Yes, it's an incredible thing for the around 900 people who will be served, but as I mentioned before, there are thousands and thousands and thousands for that need. And direct providers, um, you know, have said that 6 million is the floor. 6 million is what we need. There is a chance for the administration to make right here and put that funding into this program. Um, anything that we can do to help with that, that is a priority for us. So please, I would hope to to continue to be in conversation, um, about that. And and thank you again for the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I take a very quick bio break?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to start or no?
No, no, I'll be right, I'll be right back. We're gonna keep you on time. We're gonna keep you on time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the members of the administration. As a reminder for folks that are in the room, if you would like to testify in person, we'll just need you to fill out a witness slip, and you can get that witness slip in the back of the room with the sergeant at arms. We will now hear testimony from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that I will call up individuals and panels, and all testimony will be limited to three minutes. I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. For the first panel, we're going to have a bit of a mixed panel. It's going to start with in-person testimony from Daenerys Espinal and Stephanie Woodbine, followed by virtual testimony by Jayanne Santos, Fatima Kallo, and Crystal Campbell. If Daenerys Espinal and Stephanie Woodbine would like to come to the table, that would be great. You may begin when ready.
Good morning. Thanks, Chair Cabana, and members of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. My name is Daenerys Espinal. I'm a mother, a survivor, and a member of New Destiny Survivor Voices Project. So the micro grant program can increase someone's chances of survival because it provides access to critical resources in a time of urgency. Time is here above the essence. As a survivor, I felt trapped with my abuser, living in the same household. The cost of moving and storage fees were staggering. My credit was ruined due to leasing a car for my abuser, along with the credit card debt that was accumulated to pay for rent, food, and transportation. As a survivor, I can attest that these challenging times, not having the financial means, make the person depend even more on their abuser. In my case, the landlord refused to renew my lease for another year because my abuser had not paid the rent without me knowing. It's terrifying to have children and not know where you'd be sleeping next. It's important for survivors to feel autonomous and hopeful towards the future when making financial decisions. We know best what our needs are. This micro grant program can aid us in rebuilding our identity while maintaining our integrity, which is important. Access to this program can help with credit card payments, medical expenses, and utility bills, if applicable, just to name a few. Given the statistics of how many survivors are in need, the micro grant program should have been funded at 6 million. The 1.2 million, realistically with high rent, inflation, and domestic violence cases on the rise, is not enough. Because of this, it must be protected from budget cuts. There has been an 8.5% domestic violence cases just in New York City alone. 54% of domestic homicides victims are women. It's clear that the time is now. Survivors deserve relief. For us to know we can get flexible funding assistance will significantly make a difference. The micro grant program must be implemented soon, as every minute counts to save someone's life. Thank you again, Chair Cabana, for the opportunity to testify.
Good morning, Chair Cabana, and members of the City Council Women and Gender Equity Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council regarding the micro grant program for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. My name is Stephanie Woodbine. I am a survivor and member of New Destiny Housing Survivors Voices Project. I'm also co-chair of the Advisory Council at the mayor's office to end gender and domestic violence. First, the micro grant program to be, for it to be a success, it is imperative that it is robustly funded by the city. We are thankful for the money that has been allocated to the program, and we are imploring the city to not allow the impending cuts announced to affect it. There is a huge demand for discretionary funds for survivors, which are low barrier and accessible. Programs like VOCA, the Victims of Crimes Act, which provide some cash assistance typically take up to six months to process funds to survivors. Many survivors need quick cash for emergency situations, usually to ensure safety and ultimately public safety because it helps lessen the burden of DV on society. When a survivor needs to leave home, having access to no strings attached cash will lessen taxpayer money for the shelter system, for example, because they will be able to pay for move-in expenses. Right then and there, an immediate rehousing and rental assistance need would be met. Domestic violence is a leading cause of family homelessness, second only to evictions. I personally was fortunate enough to have been a recipient of a micro grant through Help Roads during the program's test pilot in June of 2020, at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. At the time, I was behind on rent, and that money went towards lessening the debt to my landlord. COVID-19 worsened the financial instability of many survivors, through lost productivity, for one. Micro grants would make a difference in the experiences of survivors struggling with financial and housing instability. There is a story that isn't told enough, one where the actions of abusers continue to impact the economic mobility of survivors and victims of DV, even after they leave abusive situations. Many experienced coerced debts during their relationships and/or post-separation abuse in the form of coercive control and vexatious litigation in family court. The latter often impacted my own journey as a survivor and my ability to show up as a mother for over nine years, as I often could not work or sustainably keep a job and a home, due to court appearances and mental trauma. And I am just one of many. I am imploring this program does not disappear from the city's budget due to impending cuts. It will not only function as a supported safety net to protect survivors from further harm, but it will also pair them with culturally informed case managers who will help them to heal and provide supportive services, such as mental health support and financial counseling. Thank you again, Chair Cabana, and the committee for the space and time and for your undivided attention to this matter.
Thank you. I also want to quickly acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Gutierrez. And just thank you both for your testimony, for sharing your personal experiences. I wanted to ask just a couple of quick questions. So tell me how you learned about the micro grant program? Was it through your connection to New Destiny Housing?
Are you referring to the current program?
No, no, the-
The previous, the pilot? I learned of the program through Help Roads USA. They are another provider of services to DV survivors.
Thank you. And, and you said that particularly that you had gotten a grant and you were able to like pay back some of your rental arrears? Did that make things more manageable with your landlord in the longer term?
Yes, it certainly did. He lived on the second floor, and this was during COVID, you know? There wasn't a lot of, you know, it was lockdown, a lot of people couldn't work, so it did lessen the mental impact of having him upstairs, you know, someone that I owed. So, yes. And my, you know, my children were impacted by my mental state at the time, so it really did help to kind of get him off my back a little bit, so to speak.
I'm really glad that you had access to that. Thank, thank you again both for sharing your experiences. And I know that you both mentioned coerced debt, and this committee held a hearing specifically on coerced debt, because we know that like upwards of 99% of survivors, that is like part of what they are experiencing. So thank you again for, for talking about any of those things. And then I just wanted to give you a quick opportunity, like, is there anything else that you'd like to add about the, the program or the need for the program?
There is a current need for the program right now. Personally, a micro grant would assist me right now with maintaining my current apartment. I was a recipient of an EHB voucher, so I do pay 30% of my income towards my own rent. I broke my foot last year. I teach, and I did surgery, so I wasn't able to return to work. Currently, well, I did an interview just last week, and I was hired on the spot, so I will be returning to work. So the question of being dependent on these grants, I mean, in those situations, I personally would benefit because it would help me right now, until I go back to work. I'm currently on PA. However, this moment, HRA has discontinued the shelter allowance pending recert. So my landlord hasn't been paid that direct shelter payment for this month. That micro grant would step in to that gap until I go back to work, currently, right now, in the moment. That's also one reason, you know, for the instability. Like, if you, you know, most people just need 300, 500 to afford the rent every month. So, you know, that's just an example of how it would be useful right now.
Thank you for sharing.
I would just like to say that I just had a friend during the pandemic that was killed.
Sorry.
Yeah, so it is really important, and I'm here to, financial abuse is a real thing. I had a white-collar job, and never did I imagine that getting married, doing the right thing, being a mom, was going to be overwhelming, and this person just took complete advantage. And not being able to know how to pay your bills, and just to think that if my friend would have gotten some form of relief, she would have been here today. So this is an ongoing issue. It's not just for me, but we're also here representing women that are scared to testify, that are scared to actually speak up or even get help because of their abusers. So this is something that I, yeah, I highly implore that, you know, it has to be implemented now. It's a real thing, and the mental trauma that it has and the anxiety, it's, it's overwhelming. So thank you so much for listening to us today.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. As noted, the next set of testimony will come from three folks on Zoom. For the people on Zoom, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin once the sergeant at arms sets the clock and queues you. For our first bit of testimony, could Jayanne Santos please unmute?
Good morning. Chairman Cabana, a member of the community and the women and gender equality. Thank you for the leadership and the opportunity to testify on the behalf of the survivor of domestic violence. My name is Jayanne Santos, a member of New Destiny Survivor Voice Project. We need more stability programs to help us, our housing, and get financial support. We need micro program grants that will not freeze out and that is properly funded eventually. The migrate, pardon me, micro program must get more money allocated. These type of programs can help us a lot. Flexible funding means we don't have to jump through hoops to get help we need, and it would make it faster for us to get out of a situation. As a victim, time is not always on our side. So we can, we call on our city leaders to implicate the micro grant program as soon as possible. As for the little funding, it got not to be cut, please, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the next witness, could Fatima Kallo please unmute?
Good morning. Thank you so much to give me this opportunity today to share my testimony. My name is Kallo Fatima. I'm survivor of domestic violence. I would like to share my experience and testimony with you. I ran away from my abuser with three children, one to be a baby of two months during the pandemic, to go to a domestic violence shelter. I felt welcome. The worker were, were very so nice. Whatever one thing, thing that hurt me was also, I felt the worker wanted to help us as much as they can, and seemed like there were so many restrictions that prevented us from getting help how we need it. Eventually, I was able to secure permanent housing, and I was very happy, but I had no furniture money to make my house a home. I received direct cash assistance through the Economic Empowerment Program. If it wasn't for the program, I would still have no furniture. I tried to receive help from other places, but the wait was too long, and there were no option for me to pick out my own furniture many times. When receiving help, the survivor do not have a choice of how they receive that help. The survivor do not have a choice of how they receive that help. This is why I'm glad to be there today to share my testimony. Receiving direct money gave me the opportunity to finally have a say in something in my life. It, it helped me, give me hope in this journey. It provided me with a chance to finally feel comfortable in a home after being sheltered. When we don't receive the help we need, we feel alone. This is why it is important to listen to the survivor and the worker on the front line. Thank you so much to give me this opportunity to share my testimony. God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next Zoom participant would, participant will be Crystal Campbell.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Cabana, Council, and everyone on the committee, I'm sorry. My name is Crystal Campbell, and I am a domestic violence survivor. I am also a immigrant. Many immigrants in my situation have experienced an increased risk of violence in the home and exploitation. Abusive partners often exploit us because of lack of immigration status as a way to have power and control over us. I suffer from PTSD due to my past. There are certain triggers that affect my mental illness and take me back to a sad and depressive state. Those triggers could be from the form of the color of a chair or a simple bed sheet. This program and funding has helped me to eliminate some of those triggers, which I'm tremendously grateful for. I was able to purchase household items to help me create my own safe space that satisfies my likings and gave me a comfortable environment with no triggers. My mental health has been more stable due to my environment, and so is my focus level. I am now enrolled in college, majoring in human services. My kids and I can call this place a home, as we have the option of control. Also, being in the shelter system for so long- Also, being in the shelter system for so long, it's a tremendous chance to have someone in the program who trusted us with monetary values in order to buy stuff that we need. Financial abuse was also one of the major factors of my abuse that I encountered. I didn't have options or preferences with my partner as everything was being controlled by him. So therefore, I am not just speaking for myself, but for all survivors with similar situations. Hopefully, my testimony is considered helpful in hopes of trying to break barriers through a sense of independence for other abused individuals as this will decrease their reluctance in seeking help from places that offer services like these. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinaro. Also, apologies from, I can't hear very well, so I end up having to move around for the virtual testimony. I want to thank all of you for your testimony. There were a couple of things that I really want to highlight and repeat. Just talking about leaving a situation and going into the family shelter. For those who don't know, 70% of people who go into our family shelters are survivors of domestic violence, leaving dangerous domestic violence situations. And so being able to interrupt that, not only is it the right thing to do for survivors, but also would relieve a lot of the burden that we're seeing on our shelter system as we continue to see the need arise because of multiple indicators that push people into housing precarity and homelessness. And I just, I really, really appreciated listening to folks talk about the funds and how critical they were, especially the, like, no questions asked, low barrier, we're not going to police and control how you spend your money. And Ms. Crystal, you said, you know, hopefully your testimony is helpful. All of your testimony is incredibly helpful to hear that this particular fund gave you the ability to create a safe environment of your choosing, of your, like, manufacturing for you and your family is just one of the most incredible things to hear. And like that alone, again, should be enough incentive for this administration to really prioritize robustly funding this program. And I want to thank you all again for sharing your experiences. Thanks for coming and testifying.
Thank you so much. For the next few panels, we'll go back to in-person panels. For the next one, I will call up Teal Nzunza, Kristin Shaw, and Gabriela Sandoval-Rakenya. You may begin when ready.
Okay. I'm open to suggestions. Good afternoon, good after, oh, good morning, actually. Chair Kabana, my name is Teal Nzunza. I am the Program Director of the Economic Empowerment Program at the Urban Resource Institute, and I am also co-chair of a citywide task force called the Domestic Violence and Economic Justice Task Force. And I'm here today to thank you for the opportunity to testify and share on why the Support Survivors Micro Grants Program are essential for survivors. URI is grateful to the New York City Council for advocating to include Support Survivors Micro Grant Program in this year's budget. While advocates requested $6 million to fully fund the program, only $1.2 million was allocated, as we've heard today. At $1.2 million, the program will only be able to provide $2,000 grants to 600 survivors. I think we would be hard pressed to find an apartment and first month's rent and security for less than $2,000 and even $2,000 is not enough. With an infusion of $6 million, we would ensure that at least 2,250 survivors receive at least $2,000 in essential direct cash assistance. For reference, there are over 4,100 households in domestic violence shelters on any given night. Even with $6 million, only half of those households in shelter would be able to access this vital program. This does not even account for the hundreds and thousands of survivors that are still residing with an abusive partner or unable to access shelter. As previous providers of the city's micro grant program and the state's Pandemic Emergency Assistance Fund, and we also provided our own micro grants, as you heard from our survivors today, $1.2 million is simply not enough to meet the need. It is important to understand that experiencing domestic and gender-based violence is extremely costly for survivors. In a survey conducted by FreeFrom, survivors overwhelmingly stated that direct cash assistance was their most urgent safety need. In this national survey, FreeFrom found that on average, survivors needed $730 to manage their urgent safety needs. New York City is the most expensive city in the United States and we as advocates know that the cost of safety is much higher here than in other places around the country. It is vital that a survivor's ability to access this funding is not tied to whether a survivor is in shelter, has dependents, is documented, or has an open public assistance case. Nearly all of the New York City Direct Cash Assistance Programs and the state, for that matter, have had one or more of these restrictions, which has left many of the city's most vulnerable survivors unable to access support. I have worked with survivors who have said a small amount of money, like $2,000, would go to support them in leaving an abusive partner or getting out of shelter immediately and instead have been forced to spend another night with their abuser or sleep on the subway or the street with their children often. While the cost of the city, while the cost of the city to fully fund the $6 million is to fund at $6 million, the cost to survivors who have access to, the cost of survivors who do not have access to direct cash assistance is often deadly, as we already heard. Survivors' needs are more, are often urgent and high stakes. Funding the Support Survivors Micro Grant Program and ensuring it done quickly and efficiently is crucial for survivor's safety. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristin Holden Shaw. I'm here from the New York City Alliance Against Sexual Assault to lend my voice in support of this micro grant program, particularly as it is accessible to survivors of sexual violence. At the Alliance, we work closely with survivor-serving agencies across the city to address barriers to meeting survivor needs. I am here today both with that perspective and as a volunteer advocate who works in New York City emergency departments to support survivors who have come in acute crisis. I want to affirm the critical need for flexible funding to support survivors of sexual violence. In particular, I'd like to highlight the need for this support for survivors of sexual violence outside of the context of intimate partner violence. This is a population who is often unable to access resources and relief that is available to survivors of domestic and intimate partner violence. This makes them especially in need of options like micro grants. I am here today to confirm for you, many of these survivors of sexual violence need this housing support. Advocates work with sexual violence survivors across the city who now find themselves unsafe at home. This is in addition to the people who suffer sexual violence who are already homeless, which is a sizable number of New Yorkers, unfortunately. In fact, in our conversations with rape crisis programs, we have found that housing is the number one unmet need of sexual violence survivors in this city. When sexual violence is perpetrated by a survivor's neighbor or someone who works in their neighborhood, coworker with access to their personnel record, or when a survivor has suffered sexual violence perpetrated in their home, their assailant knows where they live. When a survivor suffers sexual violence perpetrated by a landlord or a building super, their assailant not only knows where they live, they have access to come inside. Survivors are terrified by this knowledge. As an advocate, I safety plan with people in exactly this situation, trying to help them figure out where to go. And all too often, they have no choice but to stay put simply because they cannot afford to leave. In a city with housing prices amongst the highest in the nation, housing instability creates a crisis for survivors and this compounds the trauma that they are already experiencing. No one deserves to have sexual violence happen to them, but when it does, they deserve our every support to find safety and to find healing. This micro grant funding stream is so critically important to putting survivors on the pathway to finding both. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Kabana and members of the committee. Thank you for your leadership and for the opportunity to testify on behalf of New Destiny. I'd like to also thank the members of New Destiny Survivor Voices Project and all the survivors who are testifying today for sharing their experience and valuable perspective. My name is Gabriela Sandoval-Rakenya. My pronouns are she, her, ella, and I am the Director of Policy and Communications at New Destiny. Our mission is to end the double trauma of abuse and homelessness for domestic violence survivors. We do this by developing supportive housing for survivors in shelter, assisting those who are fleeing abuse to obtain subsidies and find apartments, and by advocating for more housing resources. While domestic violence is considered one of the most underreported crimes, in 2022, the NYPD filed one domestic violence incident report for every two minutes on average. Domestic violence is the main driver of homelessness in New York City. Evictions rank second. In 2022, more than 10,000 New Yorkers entered HRA domestic violence shelter system. And due to the lack of housing available to survivors, more than half of them went to exited emergency domestic violence shelter for another shelter instead of moving to their own apartment. More must be done to effectively support survivors' housing stability. We commend Chair Kabana and the council for their leadership in holding this oversight hearing on the micro grant program. Up to 99% of survivors experience financial abuse and more than half endure coerced debt. For some survivors, an immediate but otherwise manageable financial or health crisis can quickly snowball into catastrophic, into a catastrophe causing homelessness. The micro grant program initiative has the potential to be a lifesaver source for survivors, especially for noncitizen New Yorkers. It can help bridge the gap for existing federally funded initiatives, prevent homelessness and prevent homelessness for a fraction of the cost of shelter and rehousing efforts. We've seen this firsthand at New Destiny with a federal contract that allows us to pay for immediate needs such as medical costs and childcare. The payments are minimal and it keeps survivors safely housed. In June, New Destiny alongside Safe Horizon Sanctuary for Families, Urban Resource Institute, and Volunteers of America for Greater New York submitted a memo urging our city leaders to allocate $6 million for the micro grant program. However, we only got 1.2. We call on city leaders now to protect the funding from any budget cuts, to increase future annual allocations to $6 million annually, and implement the program as soon as possible. On behalf of New Destiny, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity. We are going to submit more extensive written testimony and we look forward to continue working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say for all of the advocates, there's a budget modification coming up and so, you know, set those sights high and demand that money now, not next fiscal year. And we'll be right there with you demanding it as well. I wanted to ask just a quick question around, maybe two questions around, sort of like what your respective organization's relationship was and is to NGVV as it pertains to like the micro grant program? You know, whether it was during the COVID, like, experimental period or like now, you know, we were having conversations with them and they were like, well, we can't talk about it right now. So if you are in those conversations and want to talk a little bit about that, that would be great, too.
So my program at Urban Resource Institute was one of the programs that had clients apply for the micro grants during COVID. And to my knowledge, we're not in communication with NGVV about this current program, but we and myself provided a lot of feedback to NGVV about how that program was run. It was incredibly burdensome on the organizations that provided the micro grants. And we're saying micro grants, we were really asked to purchase goods for the survivors directly and then give those goods to the survivors. So I'm hesitant to call them micro grants, but I do. It was obviously very appreciated by the clients.
That is, and before I hear from y'all, that is incredibly helpful to know and I'd like to follow up on them not having conversations with the RI, because that is incredibly. And we often find the provision of services ends up, like, the bulk of the labor ends up on organizations like yourselves. Yeah, I mean, I would hope that, and we're going to continue to be in conversation with the administration about this, but that, you know, being able to provide survivors directly with debit cards and things like that would alleviate that. But I want to follow up on that. Like, can you talk to me a little bit more about what, like, what some of the pain points were and what you would suggest going forward in this, like, permanent codified iteration of the program?
Yes, I think because the micro grants were given out and then applications were open, there wasn't a lot of guidelines around what the micro grants could be used for. We wanted to use some of the micro grants to pay off debt, as some folks mentioned here, although we did find out when we applied that that was not going to be eligible, that credit card debt or other types of debt as a part of this. The timeline was incredibly short. I think we only had around two months to purchase all of the items. The funds were given after we purchased the items and then submitted receipts for the items, which puts the burden on the organizations to front the cost of the program and then be reimbursed. And not all of those items were reimbursed because of, you know, various changes in prices and things that happened and...
Can you, wait, can you, can you, I have so many questions. Can you talk about the discrepancy between when you bought items and then like what you were reimbursed for those items? What happened there?
Yes, so the application for this program was incredibly lengthy. Survivors had to go through the application and list every single item they wanted to purchase and the price associated with it. Then it was approved. Then we had to purchase the items, which of course, maybe two months later, had a different cost associated. And also, the infrastructure for most of our organizations is not to buy different items of clothing from different vendors, you know, like coats at different sizes and some things are out of stock. It's very, you know, it became very complicated. And so then when we had to, we had to first submit the receipts for all the items and then we had to submit attestations from the client sign that they picked up the items, which of course, during the height of COVID, took a long time. And so we had a very short period of time that we had to provide those as well. So sometimes those timings didn't line up and that wasn't able to be reimbursed. And so those items would just fell on the providers to cover.
Just give people cash. There's like so much evidence out there. It's like, forget all of this other stuff. Give people cash.
Yes, I will say, we also were able to provide direct cash assistance this year at my program from a private funder. And we were able to give direct cash to clients, no questions asked, and they were able to spend it on their needs, including debt costs, which we gave over $12,000 to survivors to cover debt. And that was one of the highest needs of our community.
And if there is anything else that you think of, please just like come to us and let us know. That way we can continue to have those conversations with the admin. Do you have something? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much. It's really, obviously unlocked a lot more questions for the chair and the committee, but it's really important that we understand how this program is impacting you all in our communities. Can you expand a little bit more on the application process? So it seems arduous, right? Like, having to list out item by item, all the things you need without the certainty that you're even going to get that. Where, can you, can you expand a little bit more? What other questions were asked? What other things did, did folks need to provide?
So generally, the information is around, you know, client information.
How long is the application?
It was very lengthy. I think because they had so many sections for you to complete, depending on how many items you wanted to purchase, it could be up to like 10 pages long online. So it was incredibly complicated and difficult.
Could you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, it's okay.
Could you leave and come back to it? Or it was like a one shot? You got to complete this thing right here, right now?
From my recollection, it was one shot. You had to do it in one.
I know, I'm the tech chair, that's why. Okay, thank you. Please go on.
Yeah, no, it just, it was, it was a very complicated. There have been others, so the Pandemic Emergency Assistance Fund, which were operated through the state, their application was two pages, but they were linked to having either eligibility for public assistance, which means you had to be documented and you needed to have a dependent and, or your child needed to be documented. And there were a lot of survivors that were left out of that funding because of those restrictions. So we do advocate that this is truly flexible funding, open to everyone. And I know Chair Kabana has been an advocate for this, that the money needs to go directly to the survivors. They know how best to spend it and that's essential.
At the Alliance, because we don't work directly with survivors...
At the Alliance, because we don't work directly with survivors ourselves, we don't, we haven't administered this funding, but we work with the rape crisis programs that will. I mean, what I can say is that there's the issue of whether or not the funding would be available to sexual violence survivors, which it is. And then there's the secondary issue of do the advocates who work with their survivors know that? Do survivors of sexual violence themselves also know they might be able to tap into this funding? And the importance of making sure that that messaging gets out there. There's sort of a popular misunderstanding that the services that are found in family justice centers are really for more domestic violence survivors. And so it's extremely important that this microgram program, in order to be inclusive of sexual violence survivors, like that needs to be the messaging. I'll also say, I mean, I have a background, I used to administer emergency funding in another context. And what I'll tell you is, the word "flexible" needs to be underscored and italicized and bolded. Like, it's not flexible if we aren't trusting survivors to meet their own needs with cash. Like, we're meeting them at the worst time in their lives, and they know best what they're going to need to find safety and healing, and we need to trust them to be able to do that. And so tying it up and like, okay, we're not giving cash, we're giving goods, is going to be, is going to be a problem. The last thing I want to say about this microgram program is, for sexual assault survivors, the number one gating issue would be if they needed a police report. This is why most survivors of sexual assault cannot make the crime victim's compensation application. So I know that's off the table here, that's so important. I just want to say on the record how critically, critically important it is, and that that's also part of the messaging that is going out to the community, is that this is, this is funding that doesn't require that.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you and affirm that. I know that, and that's a really good point, because I know that, you know, obviously, the, in the, in the local law, the language is such that sexual violence is included under the definition of gender-based violence, but that doesn't do us any good unless that messaging reaches the ears of people. So that's something that we'll also make sure that we're asking about and asking NGVV to stay focused on, for sure.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I want to second what Teal and Kristen just shared about the importance of autonomy and the importance of speed. I think that we've heard that all throughout the testimony so far. And as far as I know, we have not been in contact with the administration in regards to how this program will be implemented. We look forward to having those conversations and obviously looping in survivors, because I think that they know best than anyone how this could be implemented. And thank you all for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. For the next panel, I would like to call down Ella Downs, Jimmy Marr, and Evie Litwak. You may begin when ready.
This button? Okay, this button. Good morning, Councilmember Kaban and the members and staff of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. My name is Ella Grace Downs. I'm the Policy and Government Affairs Manager at Girls for Gender Equity. GGE is an intergenerational organization based in Brooklyn committed to the all-around development of girls and young women. GGE challenges structural forces, including racism, sexism, gender-based violence, transphobia, homophobia, and economic inequity, which constrict the freedom, full expression, and rights of Black girls and young people of color. GGE has been a leader in the conversation around gender-based violence, including sexual harassment and sexual abuse, for close to two decades. We are offering testimony today because we have seen firsthand just how critical these types of grants for survivors are. Sorry. At GGE, we center healing and practice restorative justice through our program Sisters in Strength. Reporting or seeking justice for violence, abuse, or assault can be an uphill battle for survivors and can be especially challenging for Black youth. Whether they are not believed, are triggered by the process, or unable to identify their perpetrator because of fear or retaliation, they often find age, race, and gender discrimination in what is already a very difficult process. At GGE, we choose to prioritize their wellness and mental health and make sure survivors have the tools they need to move forward, which includes providing cash assistance. Earlier this year, with a fund from the Abolishing Patriarchal Violence Table and the National Movement for Black Lives Program, we were able to distribute microgrants of around $2,000 to 40 young survivors. These funds helped them leave abusive situations and environments, support their children's independence, financially support them as they detach themselves from unsafe situations, and provided them with tangible resources to reroute their lives in safety. These funds offered all of this and more. In the process of receiving this money, many of them felt like they were finally heard, finally seen, and finally believed. One note we received after dispersing the fund said, "I feel relieved of my burdens." Another said, "I feel like I can finally start to heal, and I can actually afford to seek more in-depth mental health care, nourish myself on that journey." If this was the impact of one-time grants, imagine how much more freeing larger funds could be. In order to end the epidemic and legacy of patriarchal violence within Black communities, we must start by believing and supporting survivors. I urge the Council to expand the reach and expand the depth of these grants. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you Chair Kaban for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jimmy Marr, and I'm Policy Director at Safe Horizon, the nation's largest nonprofit victim services organization. Safe Horizon offers a client-centered, trauma-informed response to 250,000 New Yorkers each year who've experienced violence or abuse. My colleague Blair will be testifying about the Survivor Microgram Program, but I'll be focusing my testimony on REZO 165, sponsored by Councilmember Lewis. This resolution calls for the New York State Legislature to pass Assembly Bill 2583 and Senate Bill 15, and for the governor to sign it into law. This legislation, sponsored by Assemblymember Hevesey and State Senator Gennardis, would greatly expand domestic violence shelter providers' ability to accommodate single adult survivors seeking shelter. Across the state, but particularly in New York City, the emergency DV shelter system was configured for families. Most rooms are designed to hold a family of two, three, or more. Single adults seeking safety in a DV shelter then face significant obstacles in obtaining this lifesaving resource. Currently, OCFS reimburses nonprofit DV emergency shelter providers with a per-person-per-night rate. This reimbursement rate is intended to cover all costs associated with operating the shelter, including rent, utilities, staffing, insurance, and other costs. Any reduction in this reimbursement severely impacts the provider's ability to cover the operating costs of the shelter. OCFS tells providers that they should downsize to accommodate singles, but providers cannot afford to do this in every case because of the way that shelters are reimbursed. DV shelter providers face a financial disincentive to downsize rooms intended for families to house single adults who are victims of DV, human trafficking, and sexual assault. The current reimbursement structure makes it much more difficult for an individual survivor to access shelter and the trauma-informed services available there. This is why we strongly support this legislation at the state level, which would require New York State to preserve the full reimbursement rate for providers who downsize a room configured for a family of two to accommodate a single adult individual. By removing the financial barrier for DV shelter providers to house single adults, this bill will give greater access to shelter to single adult victims of domestic violence, sexual abuse, and trafficking. We operate the city's 24-hour domestic violence hotline, so I'll go into a little bit of the data, but it's a little in the weeds. In 2020, about half of our hotline callers seeking shelter placement were single adults with no children. But we were only able to link 31% of these callers to shelter. By comparison, 27% of our hotline callers were from families of two, and we were able to link 74% of these callers to shelter. And this is referring to linked to shelter for that provider to actually do their own intake and assessment. So it doesn't mean that they're actually being placed into shelter. I won't go into the data, but overall, the problem's getting worse. So like, the, the number of single adults calling for shelter placement are still about half of our callers. And it's, for this past year, it's down to about 20% that we're actually able to link to a provider for intake and assessment. So we're just asking for the flexibility to be, for providers to be able to downsize without the financial disincentive of doing so. And we also, just really quickly, we know that this disproportionately will impact LGBTQ survivors, male survivors, and also older adults who might be seeking shelter with, who have adult children, so they're not going into shelter with those children. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. And I also just wanted to quickly mention, I had the opportunity to go to the exhibit with, with the photography, and it's like really incredible. But if you would take 30 seconds to say what that is, because I really think it like puts a finer point on what folks are experiencing.
Yes, I'm actually really upset that I didn't go and get to see it. I was out of town.
It's beautiful.
And then I was sick on like the last day that it was available. But we worked with a photographer who photographed the items that some of the residents coming into our DV shelter programs and other programs had on, had with them when they entered into our programs. I think one of the art pieces, and we were able to feature this in an art exhibit nearby, I think one of the most powerful pieces was a survivor had brought her documents with her, but the documents had been shredded by her abuser. So she brought them like in a plastic bag. So I mean, that is one of the photographs that we had of, like, just highlighting the, like, survivors, when you go into shelter, you're, you have to grab and go. Like, when you get a shelter placement, it's not like you get to, like, wait a few days until like you're ready. It's really like, are you ready to go right now? So you're grabbing the things that, that you're able to bring, the most vital, most critical things. I know one child brought like his toy, like his toy trucks, like those are the things that he had. So I mean, it just highlights the, I think, the, the pain, the struggle, like all of the challenges facing survivors that are just looking for help. So yeah, but we were really grateful for, for you to come and visit our exhibit.
It was really powerful, and yeah, so thank you.
I want, my name is Evie Litwak. I'm the Executive Director of Witness to Mass Incarceration. I want to thank Chair Kaban and members of the committee for allowing me to speak. I'm actually not going to address the bill, but I'm going to address, I'm going to advocate for what I believe is a very invisible population of incarcerated and formerly incarcerated survivors of sexual violence. And I'm going to discuss the degree to which this is a problem. I also want, want to say that I had to live in shelter, I was homeless for 16 months after I returned from prison, living in shelters. And I can tell you, that is the worst experience of my life. And we need to find another alternative because it's too dehumanizing. Okay? I am a formerly incarcerated Jewish lesbian and child of two survivors of the Holocaust. I say this because these intersections impacted me when I was at two different federal prisons and was in solitary confinement. Following my release, as I mentioned, I was homeless. However, this did not stop me from testifying to the FBI and others about the sexual harassment, assault, and abuse I experienced and saw firsthand during my incarceration. Within an hour of being in prison, and during my first intake, the officer was flirting with me. And I looked at him, I said, "Why are you flirting with me? We're in prison." And he said, "I like you." And I said, "I'm old. What do you want with me?" He said, "I like old." I said, "I'm a lesbian." And he said, "Well, that makes it even better." And that's in my first hour of being in prison, and that is what goes on. Most of the women that I was incarcerated with were mothers, and young mothers. I was older, I was everybody's either mother or grandma. And I was standing near an officer who approached a young mother and said, "You want to see your kids this weekend?" And she said, "Of course." And he said, "Then I want a blowjob." And she had to do this. If she didn't do this, she was going to go immediately to solitary, or worse, be transferred to a prison in another state that would prohibit her from seeing her family because of financial reasons, among others. Witness works on eliminating sexual violence in confinement because there's no Me Too movement behind bars, and we are very invisible. I'm here today to speak for the women and the LGBTQIA2S people who are incarcerated and without a voice. Most of the women targeted are already survivors of domestic violence, something which each officer in the facility knows from the pre-sentencing reports. Incarcerated women are 30 times more likely to be raped than free women. In 2003, the Prison Rape Elimination Act was passed by Congress with the intent to prevent, detect, and respond to sexual, I'll talk fast, assault in confinement. However, this is the 20th anniversary of Pria, and sexual assault and violence are rampant. I've been invited to Washington next week to attend a Pria celebration. I don't know why they would invite me with my attitude. I sit and listen in, I sit and listen in the Bureau of Prison listening sessions where they talk about Pria. It's like an infomercial for Pria. They have five formerly incarcerated people and 25 staff. They do their infomercial and tell us that they've done a survey and sexual violence is no longer a problem in prison. I politely interrupted the speaker and said, "That's not possible, not unless you're measuring prisons on the moon." Sexual violence in New York City jail system is an enormous problem. People inside can't report. This leads to trauma of the rape, trauma of the threat of no reporting, and trauma when we come home. In New York City, formerly incarcerated women and LGBTQIA2S people are disproportionately traumatized from all of this and are being asked to rebuild their lives with all this trauma and cloudiness when you come home and no access to reasonable resources. What I will, we, I'm going to skip a part because it's in my report. New York City has 8 million-plus people, and 2 million are justice-impacted. The trauma we come home with not only impacts us and everything we do, but our family, friends, and community. You don't get over being raped in prison, and the combination of incarceration and rape leads to trauma which is not dealt with. We are not on anybody's radar. Even this morning, in all the conversations, I did not hear the word incarcerated women or formerly incarcerated women. And they, I would say you're dealing with, 70% of the women inside prison have been sexually assaulted. In order to truly prevent, detect, and respond to this, my suggestion is that we put money into dealing with the trauma. They don't even know where, they wouldn't know where to find an application, nor could they complete an application. They are not, they're too traumatized to even deal with what you're offering. So we need some support for trauma, and to be honest, we need to create a way to determine the severity of the sexual violence that goes on in the New York City jail systems. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. You, Ms. Evie, you've given me a lot to, to think about. I want to now talk to NGVV about, you know, the possibility of getting applications in people's hands that are getting ready to get discharged from Rikers, for example, so that they aren't going straight from Rikers to, into the shelter system. So something to think about for sure, it's something that's important to me. Before I became a councilmember, I was a, a public defender for nearly a decade. And, you know, I know I've represented in so many criminalized survivors, but, you know, I think even, you know, understated the number of incarcerated women, you know, gender nonconforming, non-binary folks that are survivors of domestic violence and intimate partner violence, but, and gender-based violence, but even beyond that, just the number of folks that are there also to, with other, like coercive aspects. You know, there are lots of folks that are survivors that find themselves incarcerated in connection with their abusive partners offenses. And, and that's like a decent portion of the incarcerated population as well, and that's not lost on me. So those are things that I definitely want to continue to dig into. Thank you for your work and advocacy around Pria. We had, we had, we did a hearing on, with the TGNCBI Task Force, and they're not implementing it well. And in fact, it's being weaponized against trans and gender nonconforming incarcerated folk. So I hope you do go to the White House and set them straight, you know, talk about the truth. Please do, please.
I just want to say that, you know, when you, we talk about dispersing money to organizations, a lot of the big organizations that are there supposedly for us are really very transactional in nature, not transformative. You get a meal, you get a, you get a meal, a resume, a this, a that, and then it's goodbye. There is a network of formerly incarcerated women and LGBTQIA2S people in New York City. We know each other, and we are not part of the community that gets funded in, in big dollars, and we're on the ground, and we know where everybody is. So I think it's very important to know, to have a listing and to know just how many of us are working every day on the ground.
Well, I would love to stay in touch with you if you could make sure that you leave your, your contact information. your your contact information and I'll certainly give you my offices because I'd love to continue chatting. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all for your testimony. The next panel will be the last in-person panel and then we'll switch back over to Zoom. For the next panel, can we call up Joanne Kim, Blair Doraswalter and Mari Moss? You may begin when ready.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Joanne Kim, Assistant Director of Community Engagement at the Korean American Family Service Center. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to testify today and for your steadfast support of the Korean American Family Service Center. Since since its inception in 1989, KFSA has been unwavering in its commitment to preventing and ending domestic violence, sexual assault and child abuse, all while providing culturally competent and linguistically appropriate services. As a direct service organization dedicated to serving our vulnerable immigrant community, we understand the critical importance of our work. KFSA has continuously been at the forefront of providing assistance to those affected by domestic and gender-based violence, anti-Asian hate crimes and addressing the mental health needs for our AAPI community members. However, we must acknowledge that the current landscape presents significant challenges, particularly when it comes to accessing resources for our immigrant community. The NGBV micro grant program, which offers broad use, low barrier funding for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence through Sanctuary for Families, has regrettably failed to adequately reach the immigrant community that needs its most. In 2022 alone, KFSA received 4,958 hotline calls with staggering 92% of them related to domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse and trafficking. These calls were predominantly Asian women, 95% of it, and 98% were women, 100% immigrants and faced limited English proficiency. Each year, over 3,000 individuals benefit from one of our, one or more of our services with a majority hailing front from Queens. The demand for our services across the organization has steadily increased. Our immigrant survivors have lost their financial means, some temporarily while others face permanent hardship, resulting in a loss of livelihood and the inability to support themselves and their children while escaping from the cycle of violence. All this while grappling grappling with the multifaceted trauma of gender-based violence and domestic violence. We earnestly request an annual budget allocation for the micro grants. This funding is crucial to ensuring that survivors of domestic and gender-based violence within the immigrant community have access to emergency support. The funding will enable them to improve their mental health, enhance their sense of safety, maintain stable housing and regain financial stability. Notably, 377 clients have already benefited from the micro grants program, demonstrating the urgent needs for this funding. KFC would like to thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony before the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. My name is Blair Doraswalter. I'm the Manager of Economic Empowerment at Safe Horizon, the nation's largest nonprofit victim services organization. I am also the co-chair of the Consumer Law Working Group focusing on economic abuse and co-chair of the DV Residential Housing Coalition Subcommittee. Safe Horizon is grateful to Councilmember Caban and our colleagues for establishing the Survivor Micro Grant in 2022 and for ensuring that funding for the program is allocated in the fiscal year 2024 budget. As others have mentioned, $1.2 million is not enough. We know that Survivor Micro Grant programs work. The Mayor's Office and Domestic and Gender-Based Violence successfully launched an Emergency Financial Relief Micro Grant Program in 2020 at the height of the pandemic and assisted 377 survivors. The response was overwhelming, overwhelmingly positive. In fact, 40% of the service providers reported micro grants helped survivors. They worked with maintained stable housing and improved their financial stability. And unsurprisingly, over half of the impacted survivors and their children reported feeling safer. Micro grants are important and address a historic need for domestic violence and gender-based violence survivors to obtain safe housing and economic independence. Domestic violence and gender-based violence is the leading cause of homelessness in New York City. Economic abuse, which disproportionately impacts survivors from marginalized communities and historically limited resource and access to wealth, affects 99% of all domestic violence survivors and is one of the leading reasons a survivor stays in an abusive relationship. Roughly eight in 10 survivors identify lacking sufficient funds as the reason they stay with an abusive partner. And economic abuse is also the leading reason it is so difficult for a survivor to gain financial independence and stability. Financial and housing insecurities last long after survivor flees and can even last a lifetime. I'd like to share a story with a survivor I recently worked with. We reviewed her credit report, which reflected that she had one credit card, two utility bills and a student loan. According to her credit history, she paid each bill on time every month in full. It wasn't until the final episode of violence, after which she fled the abusive party, that she became unable to make the monthly payments. By the time she entered one of our shelters, her credit score had plummeted. Now she is searching for housing, but has been turned down due to a lower, low credit score. She's currently working full-time. She was currently working full-time until the person causing her harm stalked her at work. She was summarily let go. She's now looking for work, but has been unsuccessful so far. She had to drop out of school as she was no longer able to consistently attend classes or complete assignments. The survivor, like so many others, could greatly benefit from the $2,000 micro loan, micro grant. She could pay off her utility bills, utility debt that are in collections, which would improve her credit score. She could stop using her already used credit card for survival spending. She could nearly pay off her credit card debt or $2,000 would be able to afford basic necessities. $2,000 would have an immediate impact on her life. Without some form of cash funding or immediate employment, she is in danger of falling so far behind on her bills, it will take many years to recover. This will hinder her ability to secure safe housing. If her basic needs are not met, if her basic needs were met, she might be able to start college courses again, ensuring that her student loans, loan debt wasn't in vain. Just quickly go on. Safe Horizon strongly supports adding the additional $4.8 million in funding for Survivor Micro Grant Program to extend the program's reach and allow more survivors to feel safe, obtain or maintain permanent housing and begin their journey toward economic stability and recovery. Thank you and I appreciate, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Caban and all of the colleagues that were here today, Louis, Vera Louis, Farias, Hanif, Riley, Inglaterra, all council members. As noted in the previous remarks of people who were here speaking, domestic violence is not a joke. It's not a joke in our, in our city. It's not a joke across the nation. It's not a joke around the world. FJC and DA's offices need to be communicating more, especially to the courts for rapid results. Whenever we see these things happening, they have to be stopped. Testimony for Women and Gender Equity Committee for Financing Grant Opportunities, we need to do more financing. This Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is not hard to see the harrowing needs of victims of abuse locally and around the world. During the pandemic, lives were lost to abuse because there were so many people who were challenged with the obstacles of being quarantined in abusive situations. We have local instances in our communities where abuse is a normalized way of life for some people who have endured it because they feel they have nowhere to turn, mainly because they do not have the financial means and support they need to overcome the obstacles they face. In recent weeks, the world was grieved with the grotesque abuse and killing of people, especially women and children at the hands of terrorists, terrorists like Hamas. The challenges and the attack on people who are abused, traumatized, harmed or killed has to be eradicated. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, up to 99% of domestic violence victims experience economic abuse. According to many of these accounts, economic abuse is the leading reason why victims stay in abusive relationships. In desperate measures, some survivors of domestic violence abuse are expected to leave with nothing more than the clothes on their backs so that they can save their own lives from the attacks they endure, often facing homelessness and further devastations in their lives. The Center for Domestic Peace reported that the cost of intimate partner violence exceeds $8.3 billion per year in the United States. Survivors of intimate partner violence lose a total of eight million days of paid work each year due to the circumstances of abuse. The trauma can take a toll on the mental and emotional anguish a person faces and the obstacles they endure. It could take years of recovery between trying to maintain the mindset to overcome the obstacles of battling homelessness, finding job security, court appearances, and if children are involved, the challenges are compounded with greater needs for safety and support. Oftentimes, these situations are setbacks for the victim survivor to overcome, which can lead to greater measures of coercive control and financial devastation that creates cycles of poverty that can extend generations. The Oversight Micro Grant for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence can be a financial lifeline of support to help a survivor regain, reclaim and restart their life in an effective way. Besides housing stability, this can include starting a business or ask seed money to help them get ready for a new job or career. Whatever the pathway there is, a need to help people immediately with financial support who are dealing with abuse so that they can become financially independent from the person or persons inflicting the abuse and hindering their personal, professional and financial growth. I'm especially supportive of women mothers. I've been come very well-known with the organization called Movement of Mothers, who are enduring coercive and financial abuse because having children in situations of trauma such as this is a learning lesson for them as well. It teaches children habits and sets their standards of what is acceptable or not when it comes to the financial and coercive controls that affect their lives as well. Having a mother get financially free helps her children overcome the obstacles as well as it provides an opportunity to rebuild and develop generational wealth to replace the trauma they have endured. In order for this legislation to be successful, and after hearing everybody's proposals and how much it could cost, we have to reverse the effects and obstacles that it costs to be reactive and provide the financial support where it belongs on the prevention aspects. In one of the most prosperous cities in the world, I would like to see philanthropic partners who care and can elevate this endeavor to over $100 million in the next city council financial budget with matching dollars on the state level and a billion dollars, Hala Deoc, a billion dollars in support on the, on the federal level supplied to organizations that effectively with proven results, support victim survivors.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask that you conclude your, start wrapping up your testimony.
As it stands, the victim's compensation that is administered through the Office of Victim Services is exasperated by bureaucracy. There is a need to supply immediate funding to the needs of individuals that will help them overcome these financial challenges and gain financial independence. It can save lives and provide proactive relief that can lead to housing and foundational growth to help ensure that these challenges are overcome. New York City and state can provide the support the need, this needs and make it successfully locally, successful locally to help survivors rebuild their lives. It will be, it will enable this effort to achieve greater success on the national level and we can create the inspiration for the proactive changes that are needed around the world.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you so much. We'll now go back, we'll now return to the Zoom testimony. As a reminder, if you're testimony, if you're testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and you may begin once the sergeant-at-arm sets the clock and queues you. We will begin with Stephanie Mansfield, followed by Dinatalia Farina, Katie Zhang and Lauren Schuster. Stephanie Mansfield?
Hi, do you hear me, Rob? Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Mansfield. I am a survivor of domestic violence. I am a mother of three. I am a survivor of sexual assault. And I do see it as two different entities because my abuser was my children's father compared to my sexual assault was somebody that I knew. And I say that because throughout the trial, I've been hearing so many interesting, diverse opinions when it comes to why does domestic violence survivors as well as sexual assault survivors need these micro grants? The place that I was formerly living in, my abuser knew where I lived. My sexual assaultant knew where I lived. And yet, regardless, despite the fact that I had an EHV voucher, the fact that I had three children, I needed so much documentation just to get services that unnecessarily I'm entitled to, but services to help with my children. I have one neurodivergent child. I am classified as disabled. And just the transition from my old apartment that was triggering as well as mentally straining to this apartment, there are so many factors that block access to any funding that will come my way or for my children. If I did not have church, community members that helped facilitate the move, I still will be in my old apartment now, currently. I haven't been reimbursed for any of the OVS officers of Victim Services. They reimburse for moving, especially if it's a safety move. I realize that it's a process and micro grants would close that gap. I wouldn't have to rely so heavily on friends, family. And I think about those survivors who do not have that opportunity. The last little bit I want to touch base on is financial abuse and how financial abuse can impact how survivors survive. I have to co-parent with this person. I have to go in and out of court with this person. And the moment that I was no longer financially able to, like with this person, I have a higher credit debt. I am unable to meet the basic needs without assistance. I am unable to get the services that my children deserve.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
You can, you can finish up your statement. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, it's hard to raise children in New York City and not have services to help support me as I transition out of the abuse. So thank you for your time and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you. Next, can we have Dinatalia Farina?
Hi, yes, good afternoon. My name is Dinatalia Farina and I am a council advocate for the Violence Intervention Program in one of our transitional housings, Casa Sandra. We have supported survivors and their children in New York City for nearly 40 years. We are a Latina-led, community-based organization working in low-income immigrant neighborhoods throughout the city. VIP's program serves more than 1,500 survivors every year and reach over 18,000 community members through survivor-led outreach. We are the only organization in New York City with a mission to provide culturally specific support to Latinx survivors of domestic and sexual violence. At Casa Sandra, we are currently working with 37 households, of which six are single adults, the remaining 31 households are mothers with The remaining 31 households are mothers with dependent children. The most common household makeup we serve is a single mother with two or more children, and most VIP clients are not yet eligible to work in this country, and many are excluded from the safety net that helps keeps other people in NYC housed and fed. Because they are often ineligible for benefits, VIP works with our survivor community and partner organizations to create our own makeshift safety net to help them find stable housing and meet their basic needs. Flexible funding has become a very important part of stability for immigrant survivors. Flexible funding is not just about a one-time payment that gets lost in an ocean of need. We're providing the assistance as part of the safety net that I spoke about. Along with this funding, survivors also get financial coaching and financial education workshops, including resume building and intensive case management. We partner with a local bank to assist survivors in opening checking and savings accounts to further promote financial independence. When we provide flexible funding, it is part of a nuanced service plan to help meet the complex needs of immigrant survivors. The lower the barriers to this funding, the better able we are to use it as one of the critical strategies to establishing long-term stability. One of our undocumented survivors who faces a language barrier was also able to obtain permanent housing from the help of the EHV Section 8 voucher. She was able to save money for her portion of the prorated rent, again because of the conversations encompassing financial literacy. VIP provided her household with transportation and emergency food vouchers that helped her feed her family during this time. She also earned money as an outreach worker at VIP, which allowed for her to produce an income. This is an example of how it all comes together for successful outcomes because that client is now living in her own apartment with her children. Finally, with the help of flexible funding and in collaboration with other programs, we help put immigrant survivors on the path to stability and permanent housing. We hope these funds and partnerships continue and grow so that immigrant-serving organizations like VIP can help survivors and their families to stabilize and heal after violence. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just a quick thank you to the work that your organization does. My current constituent services director came to us from VIP and is just, you know, credit to the workplace that you all have and the work that you do every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Katie Zhang, you may unmute.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Katie Zhang. I'm a housing specialist at Womankind. I'm also part of the Domestic Violence Economic Justice Housing Stability Subcommittee, which is a coalition of other housing service providers in New York. At Womankind, we operate two emergency DV shelters, as well as non-residential sites in high Asian populations, neighborhoods in Brooklyn, Queens, and Manhattan. I'm here to advocate for an increased budget for the micro grants for a couple of reasons. First, on a selfish note, it makes my work a lot easier to have flexible funding. A lot of our case management work is just managing expectations about eligibility requirements and timelines that we have no control over. We also have many clients that do not qualify for housing assistance, like PEPs or City PEPs. Just this week, and it's only Wednesday, my coworkers and I had to explain to four different survivors that they do not qualify for PEPs or City PEPs because either they're not in shelter or they make too much money at $30,000 or $40,000 a year, and that they should just apply for the housing lottery. And applying and winning the housing lottery is not a great solution to the housing crisis and the housing instability people are facing. Second, it makes our relationship between providers or advocates and survivors a lot stronger with flexible funding. When we can give reliable information and have more guidance about what people can expect to receive, it helps build trust. And, or when we can actually provide material resources that don't have as many restrictions, and we don't have to ask so many invasive questions about how people use their money, that builds trust. And that trust helps us reach people who don't necessarily have that with government services, especially people that we serve whose primary language is not English. It also, on the last note, as we've heard, it makes survival a little bit easier for survivors. So many changes happen with work and health and children's schools. Most government funding is not equipped to handle all of these changes due to delays and administrative burdens. Since flexible funding would help fill that gap and give survivors some control over their own money and lives. As we've heard, the impact on mental health is also just so important and necessary in this work. So, again, thank you for your consideration. Thank you to Chair Caban and the committee for your energy and attention to this.
Thank you. I just think it's important to highlight something that you said around the micro grant program, the funding really filling a gap left by the current existing sort of social safety net programs that we have here in the city. Being able to have folks that don't quite, or like just outside of eligibility for those things, being able to access this funding being super, super critical. So, thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you. Will Lauren Schuster unmute, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Schuster, Vice President of-
Oh, hang on. We can't quite hear you. Are you still there? Are they still in the Zoom room?
Lauren Schuster, are you with us? There might be a connection issue. Is it just from there? Because we can, right? You can see them on there? Yeah. Lauren, do you have audio? Sorry, I'm creeping on your screen. Lauren, if you'd like to try again, maybe? Lauren, it seems like we're having connection issues. But just a reminder that we can accept submitted testimony at testimony@council.nyc.gov up to 72 hours after the hearing. And we will, of course, be reviewing anything that is submitted. So, apologies for that. If there's anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, again, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who came and testified. I know that I learned a ton and just walk away from, with a reaffirmation, really, of just how critical and lifesaving this program and funding for this program is. It is critical to the health and safety of New Yorkers, particularly survivors of domestic and gender-based violence, also including sexual violence. And so, we'll continue to work with you all in making sure that it gets the funding that it deserves, but also highlighting some of the pain points and the things that we can do to make sure that the implementation execution of the program gets the kinds of results that we need and deserve and is not overly burdensome and that we're getting these funds out as quickly as we can. Thank you again for being here with us, and this concludes our hearing.